I got that they wanted them weeds and all that kind enough. I went out and did that with my little tractor. And thanks to Kyle, I actually just about didn't bring his trailer back. That's a nice trailer. I actually filled them all up for you. They were all a little low. Anyway. It'd been sitting there a spell. I didn't clean weeds up for you, sorry.
That's fine.
Anyway, I did also get done Manila at species site. They still had corn in. So part of where we'll be doing our work, there'll be some stocks. I'm not gonna drive down there again. They can. But they should be able to do their part because I got all the weeds out of their way. And I did get a hold of Stan and and Mike, it's Mike, Mike, his son-in-law that does the farming. And he was he was planning on being down there early this week. And then he said, he'll get that out of the way right away. So Ray and them should be ready to rock. Cool. And I think it sounded like through our emails that. They should be out with the concrete people looking at them this week so that they can actually get rolling. At the end of this month versus November.
So they already have their concrete people?
Yeah, there it's.
Footings for the tower.
Savers people.
Not not the not the pads for the shelters or nothing like that.
Did you? Did you guys see the little maps that he's got redone up there and what the sites all? Them emails came yesterday. I'm Mike, Mike Mazatello or. He did. He did them up. They look pretty. They look pretty sure.
Someone share it so I can just put it in mine.
Yep.
My ongoing file.
You have it. Did you get it? Anyway. Yeah, right here. It's this one. But anyway. Got that done last week. And so that's all cleaned up and ready to rock. And also where Paul was having a little issues with the bridge. I got the final call last evening. That he is his attorney must be Judge Ranniger. And he said he's going down there to sign that. So we should be good to go on the on the L fifty-one.
Okay.
Bridge.
Thanks, Ty.
Yeah.
You called the other day. I'm like, I called him and he never called me back, but.
Yeah.
It's off target, huh?
He might have thought I was.
Low hanging fruit.
He thought I might have been easier target. So I must have looked like the easier target, but I just told him the same thing that Paul said, you know, I mean, we really got because of federal dollars. We we aren't we really. He said, well, there are other counties do that. I said, well, I wouldn't probably say that out loud. You might get somebody in trouble, but. But I kind of doubt it. You know, them engineers know what they can and can't do with that federal monies and stuff. You know, as far as horse trading, when I told him, I said, you know, you're welcome to come address the board on the other issue. If you think you were wrong, but then I he said, well, I'm really worried about finding that property line, you know, I said, we'll send somebody out for that.
I would. I would overlook to them, you know, after we vacated the road, I would maybe he might have legitimate. Legitimate property line dispute there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Create a berm and I'm pretty sure the berm could potentially be part of his property.
So I mean, I told him, I said, we'll send Brett, you know, out there to find you the new line. That's that's.
I think that was part of the agreement of closing the road.
That Paul says that we always do. So I mean, as far as helping him out with that kind of stuff, that that didn't sound like it was a challenge, you know, I did. I did double check with Paul and all those things. So that those are the biggest things that I probably most noteworthy things. I don't know. I don't know for sure when race coming down, so. I don't know that I've got any. Part. There's the EMA budget meeting. Is that tonight?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Yeah. Yeah, it's. Right here. It is tomorrow night, six P M. And that's Eric. And then I said, I'd be there too. Greg said some months because it's got tower monies is in the night. So I said, sure, I'd be there. Anyway, some of the one I had a couple of calls from mayors wanting to know what that was about. In particular Charter Oaks, he told me and I said, it's now I explained to him what the he saw that was pretty simple. He says, anything's gonna catch me off guard and by surprise. Nothing I'm aware of. And I said, it's just about budgets. And I explained to him what we're doing with the towers. He said, oh, okay. And that we're everything drought and through EMA. I'm on the. Special hiring committee for our new C B C.
Oh.
Director. And. Are we're having a meeting on the twentieth. And just going over will go over the job descriptions and stuff like that. So I just, you know. Want to let you know that we have a presence on that. Try to be kind of quiet. They've got some people that are probably pretty good at doing this, so I try not to make too much noise unless. They start deviating from things that I think are in the best interest of the county. I'd like to really make sure that we're getting somebody and you guys correct me if I'm crazy, but. That's very business or development oriented. I think that if we don't get on the stick, we're gonna. Be a county in decline continuously, you know, so I'd like to see if we really work after. And I actually had a couple of suggestions that I've talked to people. And about who might be a good one that would even be a local people would be from our local crop of people. And one of them for sure stuck out in my mind. So we'll see how all that stuff goes going forward. If anybody's got any suggestions or ideas. You know, please don't hesitate to let me know so I can bring it to the attention of this committee. And. Yeah, that kind of covers it for me until I remember something that I forgot. If it happens.
It does. The forgetting or the remembering. Yeah, I lied to you last week. I did attend a.
Well, I didn't even know.
Meeting last week for the for the board of directors for the WOFC. Everything's hunky dory for that month. We ended up to the positive. Increased and didn't lose anybody. Hopefully, we're starting to see things possibly change. They. You wouldn't think you'd be doing today what you were doing five years ago or four years ago. The meeting I had last week was the the regular executive board meeting. Well. Clean up tough stuff this time of year. Our next meeting will be with the full board with the how the. The direct new directors with the. They're going to be coming up on fifty years. And so they're looking at doing something here in the fall for to recognize fifty years of COGS visits. The Policy Council will meet them. Sarah made the Policy Council, Sarah Carlson for us. Sax down. Bill Sacks coming to meet in a meeting here is could be nonprofit or nonprofit in Carroll County. Through that round, but it's right in the center of the district. I'm real excited about this and I was kind of hoping we can start talking to it, but we can't. It'll be an interesting deal and it should be coming out here fairly quickly. All we're working waiting for is paperwork. And it's gonna be kind of exciting. I don't want to say how much it is, but it's a lot of money.
You're such a tease.
So then so so the local assistance program. It's always interesting to kind of see what projects and stuff are out there. Dennison did not or Iowa. Dennison did not. One of the applications they applied for. Said in the previous meeting. Just send these around. That's about it for me.
Thanks. Please tell us more.
He didn't. If this one is is interesting, I just. Chomped at the bit, we shouldn't know it.
Before you let the cat out of the bag.
I can see headlines on the front page of the paper. Cats coming out of the bag. Only speculation from this point.
And then we have a revolving loan fund which are just doing tremendous. All keeping up with their success. I get we're getting close to that amount, you know, when they come from them with a look over your stuff. They say you're too good. You're 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 too tight on handing out money.
I gotta freely give out money.
So one and a half percent, one and a half percent of the money they go is is in case it falls off.
Right. We get not talking about some of that. You get more points for having bad debt.
We get not to get for it, so.
I can help with that bad debt situation.
Is this something since we don't have it on the budget?
It's the empty city center building. I just wanted you to see what an empty building gets you for a bill. So we're trying to I talked with like Dave Rothie. And he spoke with our utility company because we have a Black Hills Energy bill also. Anyway.
I mean, there's some, I mean, furnace.
There are like five meters, four or five meters in that place. So I we're gonna try to condense that because you get charged per meter. And the. D. Yeah, exactly. DMU, they have a. They're putting a transformer in next late spring, early summer. And if we wait till then to condense the meters, it'll happen through their projects rather than at our expense. So I mean, we might have to pay for some of the. Yeah, something, but basically the and they're gonna put a transformer on the ground just outside our building. Outside of this old city center building. So that's a work in progress. Also. We got Black Hills Energy, which I didn't realize wasn't put in our name yet. Because I guess that was my job to do. Didn't know that. Anyway. Yeah, literally. So that happened. Well, they would cancel their own. I don't even think they did that.
That's what I'm saying. Drew a flag when they canceled it.
So again, Dave Rothie talked with. So they came and read the meter one day last week to do the transition. And he talked to the guy that was reading the meter about. The issue with all the meters and would it be possible to condense? Well, it would be a bigger meter. Because of the amount of gas possibly. I don't know. I don't understand all that anyway. So there might be a cost difference. So they were gonna weigh that and let us know what the cost difference would be if it would be. To make that transition for natural gas. So work in progress. We're trying to reduce those costs, but.
Yeah, it'd just be interesting to see what. DMU says the cost to do it today would be versus waiting till. March.
Yeah, I don't know exactly when.
It costs a thousand dollars a day and we're paying four hundred and twenty dollars a month to do it. It would still be beneficial to do it now.
Yeah, maybe.
That's the only that's the only question I would have about that. I'm guessing. It'll probably be more expensive than twenty-five.
Probably.
To switch that over. It seemed like we could come out for less than a thousand dollars. Anyhow, and I get paid upfront. No, I didn't even give that a talk because I seen that build the day like, geez, an empty building. That's.
Right. That's a lot of.
Unbelievable.
Four hundred and twenty dollars for an empty building.
Well, there's really not a furnace going probably right now or.
No, I don't. Well, I don't know. We need to someone needs to maybe manage those thermostats so that they don't. Especially if there's when there's nothing going on in that building.
Who does the like on the does Dave do all the maintenance and. Do Dave and Pam do it over on the building that public health in now?
What kind of what it means? Are you talking?
Cleaning.
Or the clean.
Yeah.
They do that. So watching the. Yeah, sorry. Takes a lot of. A lot of bites to keep that.
Running tasking.
I was just looking at this commission to assess damages. I think, would it be wrong if we pen a letter to every one of these that say, hey. Prepare, you know. That's why I'm just looking at some of these, you know, that are probably maybe. You know, some of them guys, some of them wood people, they like a good fight once in a while.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I just think. Well, yeah, I just know. I think that maybe it would be fair that says, hey, this pipeline's coming through. I'm in imminent domain is probably intimate on some properties. And.
Maybe Colin would help you draft some to him. That would be appropriate.
I think that would be appropriate to them because some of them, I don't, I don't want to deal with this anymore, you know, I'm to an age in my life where. I don't want to deal with it, so.
And the terms are coming up. Do you want to, you know, renew or do?
Right. And maybe they don't want to be on it if they have to deal with that.
That's why I was thinking maybe that letter would be great to.
Don't want to chase them all off.
No, exactly.
Have him write the letter to reassure them how valuable they are. And. This is probably gonna be. Very important. And you guys, you. And women have always stepped up to the plate to serve the county graciously with the pipeline coming through. I don't know if these have ever been called.
No, just don't make I come.
I don't remember any.
With our ordinance. About a draft and what we recited the title to do.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And how that works. Would you put on the agenda to discuss the ordinance in the compensation board next week? So I'll tell Colin it's gonna be on the agenda.
You keep saying compensation board. It's a commission to assess damages.
Well, that's what they call it with the that's what they called it in Shelby County and that's what they.
Compensation board?
They do call it.
The compensation board sets our wages, so.
But that's what they call it in the.
But we mean not the.
Discuss, take action or just discuss.
I don't think we'll be able to take action because we're just gonna have a draft.
Pipeline ordinance? Is that what it is?
Review, draft. Well, if it's perfect, we could take action. I mean. So it never first to say take action.
Right.
Case is. So if we say discuss and take action and we discuss it, but we decide not to take action.
Right. But discuss what? Tell me again.
Draft ordinance concerning hazardous pipelines. Which by having it on there, it should help them to at least be still working on it so we can see where we're at with it. Yeah, keep it moving.
What a. When you said hazardous, made me think, what happens if we change it to where it's pipelines in general? Because I mean, not saying it ever happened, but I've seen these are. You know, the southwest part of our country is very dry and there's some idle talk of building a pipeline from the Great Lakes to the to like Las Vegas for water.
You kidding me? So let's drain like.
Yep. I don't know if water would be considered hazardous pipeline. Although some people might consider it a safety or she could flood their house.
And then still impact the ground compaction and all those.
Just a thought. We can discuss that next week.
All right. We'll see what Colin comes up with and see if it meets with what we're all thinking it should say. We have to have a starting point, you know. Commission to assess damages. Like say that, right?
You did.
I just want to share as you shared with Dan. This was yesterday morning. I always. On Mondays, I always meet with the guys and then I go out to the park and roadside guys. And I was out there. I was heading out there yesterday morning. I got to the top of the hill there on Yellowstone Park Road. I looked out to the east and it was like. Deer standing there. So I quick, you know.
Oh, wow, that's.
I snapped that picture yesterday morning. I said, you know, the mornings are the best.
They are.
You know, just every once in a while in those deer were just standing there, you know, and they stayed there and I'm kind of like.
Don't run.
But. Well, yeah, some good things happening, you know, you're all aware. We're gonna settle on the eighty fifty-nine damage. So that's something we can cross off the list. We're getting Kenwood kind of cleaned up. That's all coming together really nice. So it's gonna look that good for everybody. Martha on the. The descriptions and, you know. You know, Brad worked, you know, Martha, Brad, all three of us kind of, you know, that all kind of came together like it should. It's gonna be a win-win for everybody. Everybody, well, my county property owners in Kenwood will just streets and alleys will disappear. Which is good. We never really done anything there anyhow, but it just kind of beats that up.
Dan said that.
You just talked about. So we're gonna get that.
You talked to him?
Yeah.
Good.
So. So, you know, all they gotta do is walk into the bank over there and sign it, otherwise it.
So this Kenwood property, though, it kind of working through this and it's. You can see the goal. Where property is wrong or wrong.
Yeah.
Would that. Maybe roll over and do the burns or some of these other.
I agree, yeah. I was always under the assumption since we have title, if the board's willing to just say, hey, let's just turn it over to you guys, you know. Because basically, like I told Kyle, what's happening here is that, you know. Crawford County owns that property that I really truly think it's in the best interest just to quit playing the deed for those people.
Basically occupying it for.
Yeah.
Half a century.
Yeah. Yeah. But I made it clear to Kyle when we when we get to that point, I'm making clear to Martha too, is that. And we'll create the quick claim. So we'll vacate it first and quick, you know, create a quick claim deed. It says now you own this part of the alley, you own this part of the street. But we are not going to go out and physically on the ground set property boundaries. Okay, I think. That that'll that'll have to be up to them because you're giving it to them, but it'll be their responsibility. I think that's a fair. That's a fair analysis, you know, or fair. Because. Yeah, we don't want to get in the, you know, we don't want to go out there and setting property pens and doing a, you know, property plots. We're just saying, hey, this is yours now. Absolutely. You guys figure that out. Didn't cost you anything. All you gotta do is have a survey or figure out where that's at. So so that's really important. You know, because we don't want somebody coming back two, three, four, five, ten years from now saying, hey, you need to set the property. We're not gonna. Okay.
No, no, something like this, you know, you're talking about the Kenwood thing.
Right.
The Kenwood. Now, on a simple roadway vacation.
Yeah.
Where that's completely different.
Yeah.
Here, there's fee type of ownership versus easement.
Exactly. That's what I thought you were getting.
On a simple roadway vacation where we just have an easement. You know, and you find the corners and you just shoot a line. That's that's a whole different ballgame. Okay, then we'll do that.
No, that's kind of what we do. All right.
Yeah, so some good things. A couple more we checked off. We can put all those.
Get stumped out. Do you find the one piece that you've been looking for and then more pieces fall together?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that that turned out to.
Well, we have our precedents that. With Kenwood, that'll set a precedent on these.
Yeah.
On the other ones.
On these.
No longer community communities.
They're unincorporated.
Yeah, communities. I mean, Burn has a little bit of. Housing yet. But but as far as it goes. And there is a place.
More populated than Burn.
Chad claims he's the mayor.
Marty's done a lot of good work.
Yeah, she's been a great asset, a great set of staff, so.
So. I just was kind of wondering, you know, I didn't until I started looking at maps that you gave us, I didn't realize we had so many little. Communities out there that no longer exist. You know, and you kind of wonder if there's little situations like this for each of them.
Elsa's getting a new.
Like. Yeah. They're right.
That's good.
So anyhow, good, good stuff. Yeah. The bridge, we're gonna hopefully pour that concrete on Friday. So it makes it a little nicer.
I'm not bringing like a new paving machine down. Well, try it and true.
Yeah. You know, that, yes, stuff happens.
Yep.
But it ended up turning out all right.
I was combining there the other day and I looked at that and I hope they use a tried and true paving machine on this new bridge over there.
So this is a bridge just south of one forty-one. But anyhow, it. Gaberson did it and they wanted to use a stringless like a three D paver. They go make us developing, come make on Gaberson. Told brothers and sisters, if you wanted to, it sold the same deal. But anyhow, I said, yeah, sure, we're always willing to experiment with this stuff. They had engineers from all over. There when we did that. And anyhow, two things happened on that bridge. We've never had that before. One, the clamp broke down, so we had to header up and stop. And then reconvene a week later. So basically just stop, you know, there's certain points on a bridge where you can do that. Then we got started again and they had this brand new paver. That was, you know, it'd be like an old John Deere forty-four hundred combined and a new John Deere S T sixty-six eighty or whatever they are, you know. They weighed much more than the other one in their false word was to support the original one, not the new one. And so as they got over the pier, some of the the braces, knee braces on the outside started to fail. Went down.
Oh, sure.
And they were able to keep going and they were able to salvage it. And they were able to keep going and they were able to salvage it. You gotta, they can slam that area right there. That good. So that's just one of those things that kinda, you know, sneaks up on. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't figure additional bracing for the heavier paving. Everything, everything worked out alright. So, yeah, they'll be doing that on Saturday or on Friday, excuse me. Perfect weather. I, I hope it all comes together. So yeah, a great crew. They're working on two ADs and just continue. More you can say. That'll probably be done there by the end of next week.
I went down there, when I was down there, I drove back and then did you see that little video?
Turned out really well. So, uh, so that's good. The bridge crew, they're working on some pavement patching, they're trying to set up this week. Just miscellaneous stuff that they're kinda cleaning up. And, uh, and then they're gonna go work on that. Probably get close to finishing the season out there then. These are clean up, so roadside seeding, finish the cover crop down on that road, that Lansing road that we just finished up. And then the, then it'll be done. Put that stuff away, call it good, so. We got an H and M project, we're gonna be able to get that left, so that was going to be the type we're letting it send fifty-five north and south of Dale. So next year we'll have a bridge on the L fifty-one and H and M paving. Yeah, yeah, and we've got a lot of grading lined up for that. Uh, you know, there, it's still a struggle, but we've got quite a bit lined up for twenty twenty-three, you know, beyond that. But yeah, we got plenty of bridges and culverts.
It sells itself.
They should.
You would think it would. And you know, cause I was just looking like the new driveways that Ken will have to wheel into the fields and.
Yeah.
You know, just that whole thing is just.
There's no pipes. We eliminated pipes because we were even drained. There's very few pipes on that road.
Did they hit any railroad memorabilia when they were going across the railroad? Many years ago when we did the, the solid part of that. As Tony went up there and he was doing a little ditching or whatever and I was, I'm peeling out their ground boxes full of railroad spikes. That were just thrown in the ditch. Brand new, old stock.
I think I remember that. I think I remembered. That makes the air shoes, buddy.
Yeah.
Like geez, look at all this. Been buried in the dirt.
So yeah, things. Fuel prices continue to be a pain, a little bit of a problem for us, so. It is, you know, I mean, just we, and I keep, you know, coasting on everything there. Three full-time positions that we haven't filled. We're just gonna ride through the winter and kinda see how things go. And be able to take care of part-time. You know, even the snow removal, if we get into it, you know, some people that we could call for snow removals. Stay the course here, see how things shake out. So.
Sure.
They're gonna give you access to a color printer or something, so you can be fancy. So that you should take one.
So congratulations.
Yeah, well, when they put it on the Facebook.
Actually, it's to keep up on families and kids is what I like best.
You were up on, on Facebook.
The new baby Edelman.
Well, it is ten o'clock. So I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing. The move and second to open the public hearing in regards to budget amendment, this will be your twenty-two dash twenty-three. This is what we have discussed. Earlier. Can't vote during.
I know, but you gotta vote to open it. I'm just saying.
All in favor of opening public hearings, sign if I'm saying I. Alright, public hearing's open. Well, like, like I was saying before, I was legally talking out. This is the stuff that we. We, uh, talked about earlier in the resolution reflects by department in total.
Anything in blue pertains to the hearing we're doing right now. Anything in yellow comes with great. Just so you know all that stuff too. That's for tomorrow.
The yellow stuff.
So we, we take action on this today. We don't have to reconvene and take action after they have their meeting. But if they are public hearing fails, we, I mean.
Just won't transfer.
We just won't transfer. You know.
Yeah, I just wanted to keep it separate so you know.
Any questions in regards to?
I have none. Yeah, any questions? Danny said that the, he cleaned them doors too, where they were hard to open. Doesn't recommend they do it again because.
I have that trouble too. I tear some part there.
And that youth, so that youth guidance in the shelter care for DHS, um, I think they're really close to having had spent that. We did a little extra, but we've gotten a couple more claims from DHS for shelter that weren't made, so just gonna say that, yeah, they are ours.
There are kids.
There are, there, there are Crawford's kids, but they were assigned to shelter through DHS and not through probation. So it becomes a county expense. So it might not, no, but we will. We will in the future, but it might require yet another budget amendment.
Is this something that?
And you can't predict it, you know?
No, it's unpredictable. I just wondered how this happened in the past. I'm sure this, this didn't start with Nate or did it?
Um, I think, I think Bar Grover used to, cause he had, they have a DHS, DHS line in their budget.
So, is this amount set in stone? We can't change it now that it's. Okay, so in other words.
Another, if we have another budget amendment, there might be more money in it for that identical thing. Just saying.
So that, and what, where, where do we, where are we putting that money?
In the DHS budget.
DHS.
Cause we pay for them to have a space. Of course, we get reimbursed through LAEs. And that's the law, that's the department that it's in.
Your day for the kid, we won't charge you rent.
Oh, I know we would. When does that get to happen?
Any other discussion in regards to the budget hearing?
Just anything where.
We put a lot of money in Department fifty-one, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which Terry and I debated. Right, with all these expenses on general services, but.
Because that's where the ARPA fund is.
The two hundred and eighty? Yeah.
Yeah.
Normally, we probably wouldn't code those as general services.
Right.
But that's where ARPA's at.
That's where ARPA's at currently, so.
Who else?
Chuck, you're a gentleman and a scholar.
Is hearing normal, no more, is there any written oral objections to? Any other citizens here, do they have any objections or comments in regards to the budget amendment? Here none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Move and sign to close the public hearing in regards to budget amendment twenty-two, twenty-three. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Is that two action items?
No, the hearing's not action. The resolution is to appropriate to departments.
Budget or closed on budget hearing. Minute or so and I'll take action on.
Oh, Kim.
Official. Clock is knocking on ten ten, so we can move on to our ten ten item. Motion for, did you already make that motion to through the resolution?
No, I said it's ten ten.
She had a second pie, so I just thought we'd let the.
Ten ten, resolution appropriation of the depart, two departments for fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-three. Okay, resolution, want me to read it? Any discussion in regards to this resolution? Here none will proceed to vote on this resolution or it's a roll call vote due to the resolution. Jury. Eric. Ty.
Hi.
Gene. Chair votes. Resolution passes.
That was a lot of money spent, no, I know.
Oh, it took us a while to get some. Seven years in the making. But the checks get wrote at one time.
Yep, they're going around the table right now. Thanks Chuck. Thank you sir, appreciate it.
Well, you know, you just watch some of the stuff that goes on with them satellites now in China and all that back and forth. Talking about like with Elon's satellites are interfering with their space station, they'll blow them out of space and all.
That's gonna be an issue, yeah. Yeah, what we feel sorry for.
I do.
Totally disrupted thirty percent.
What's that?
They totally destruct thirty percent of utilities, water, sewer, electricity.
Who did we miss here, Eric?
Let's see if I can try not to hit.
Rocket or whatever, it was supposed to come right over aisle.
Oh, absolutely.
I wanna get down for the one to go to the moon. They ain't launched anything that powerful since the show. Dad said, you know, Dad, BJ worked there then and Dad said when they, when that one would go up and especially the night launches. All the cocoa beach, the whole area, like day. That's a big candle.
That is, you're so right. That is, you're so right. Try to point him out for it.
And that would be me to go down soon. I never got to go down.
The one that they pushed back now. Over there, it's in Orlando. You could see it from.
What was that?
Yeah, exactly.
History.
At least it wasn't coming down.
Yeah.
Amen.
That was down there when Elon's blew up on the pad that time. I got interviewed by the Fox channel out of Orlando. What did you see?
Fireball.
A big fire.
Look at that, look at that.
Was there something I missed or what?
Yeah.
It exploded.
You know, though, I, when I remember when we were having that, that hazmat, when that guy came to the tech class at times.
The Cuban cry.
Yeah. Yeah, that guy, yeah. He, uh, he had that bottle of hydrazine, or he said was hydrazine, and he said if any of this leaked out. Everybody in this room would be dead immediately from the gas vapors. And I kept looking at he's holding that. There's a crack. You can see it from where I was sitting. I'm like, dude, you need to put that away.
But you figure out the water.
But then they said that there's actually something when, like when that happened and I don't know for sure, but they said that big second fireball. Was actually that explosion to burn up the hydrazine. And they had one explosion, so that was when you seen the second big fireball on that, on the videos. That's what they claimed that was.
But they got, like I said, Aramis has been pushed back till November.
Yeah.
It's like the second week of November. And that one takes off and sort of circles the moon.
That's the one that should have a big of a fire.
And then stop and then you can come back. And then the next one after that is the one that's under, not a virgin. They're not doing a lot of practice.
How can you practice something like that? It's not like baseball where you get all of the field and screwed down.
I grabbed one.
Oh, give me one.
I would order the.
Candy corn. Is that what you're harvesting now? Why, everybody?
Add that to your pile.
Right.
Life slows down.
When is that? It tastes like a solid net roll.
There's a big tub of it on our counter this time of year.
Sold with that, my mom liked that.
Like all these Facebook deals, saying, put your peanuts in your Pepsi, you know, it's a new wave.
Oh, that.
It's like doing that for years.
Right?
That's where you sit down.
Barbara Mandrell, wasn't that who used to sing about it? I was Henry, when Henry wasn't.
There you go. Yep, you're right.
Oh, let's go to Truro.
I learned to do it down at Bud's gas station. Actually was.
I wondered where you guys, where it hurts. Oh, yeah, I should have known that.
I forgot.
By the way.
You forgot?
Justed myself before he moved, so I don't know.
Oh. You know, there's something going around, right? A cold bug.
Hilarious.
I, my husband graciously gave it to me, so.
Yeah, I think the kids are passing it around, so if you get.
What are you getting now?
I said I got this happy pop and so I thought I better test this out for COVID.
Oh, no.
On all the.
It already went through our office. I, I just stayed out of the office.
I, uh. Somebody from our class reunion ended up with it.
Really? Yes. I think, I think I have a vaccination thing quite real well here.
Some of that.
Turn up for that.
Thank you.
I gotta turn it on. I wasn't here for it.
I got all my flu and. I actually got a pneumonia shot this year. No, it's over, so.
Yeah, you see my picture? Be that short person trying to look over that.
Already had that double one? Double one, okay. I should, I should be anti-shingle. Is that you? I see the picture.
I see you guys.
Oh, for no, this was actually.
Oh, that's the supervisor. Yeah, I'm on the end, I'm way in the back. I gotta use the kind of seat in that.
Yeah, no, trying to get that picture of our class reunion is too hard. Hurting cast into a basket.
Ever.
Before we get too carried away about photos of parents and baby pictures and stuff, let's move on to our ten, twenty item. It's a discussion item. So no action will be taken. Jake, Jacob. Come on now.
Jake.
You're the next contestant on the price is falling.
So, um, this is just kind of a formality more than anything. Um, this is an approved project. For this budget year is a high dollar item, okay? Um, and it was, I, well, it's, it's all one and then it's chewing up our system a little bit in the process, okay? Um, it, it is originally, the project was a lot of four thirty grand, okay? However, I did save some money in a previous project, all still in the same line item. Um, an extra ten grand, so you're gonna see about, you're gonna see forty-four thousand there on this item, okay? Instead of the third, yeah, I mean, there, there's no adjustment in funds needed or anything, because it's in my budget. So, um, but what it is, is two years ago, twenty twenty, we purchased a hyper-converged infrastructure. Um, it's our simplicity system that we have. Um, it's a two-note system and we're just gonna advance it to a three-note system. That's all it is. So, um, and like I said, there's a few other costs interwoven in that. That's kind of why it's a little bit more bloated. Um, one, we're expanding the system a little bit, not by much, just a little, expand the RAM across all the nodes. And, um, just updating it to what it needs to be. So, um, I wanted to kind of bring it before you guys, before you see it run across and be wondering what's forty-four grand for?
Thank you.
But forty-four grand, forty-four grand is four.
Right here.
What's, what's going on with CH in Omaha?
What's that?
CHI and.
Medical people back there, they got hacked. They had to shut down for a week and wrote all paper. Well, yeah, no surgeries, no.
Well, the E nine one one system in Omaha got hacked last, a couple weeks back too.
Really?
Yep. So they were all pen and paper. So, but, but yeah, like I said, there's really no action to be taking place here because it was already included in the original budget, so.
You're just making us aware of when we see that they'll come through, we're asking, say, oh, geez.
Yeah, Jake, get up here and take a look. So.
Hell, you bought now.
Right, exactly. So, um, the company that you're seeing there, it was not put in by the original company that we purchased the system. We purchased it from CDW and they provided the project. Um, this one is actually a local company, a closer local company. I can't. I thought it was out of Sioux City. I was told it was out of Sioux City, but it's, but that quote states Omaha, so, but it's in the area, so. But, um, like I said, just wanted to bring that, bring that to you guys' attention and see if you had any questions about it or anything.
It's my agleader guy. My colleague said, oh, it won't be expensive.
Sure, okay.
Perspective.
Text that just, you know, that was between eight hundred and sixteen hundred dollars. Well, that's just right football.
So, but yeah, it was considerably more than what I originally anticipated, but I stick, but when I purchased the adjoining switch for it. Um, originally that was supposed, that was, we were allocated twenty-five thousand for that. I ended up getting it for fifteen.
I just bought some switches off Amazon. It was a four pack for like eight bucks.
I don't think we're talking about the same thing.
I wish we were, but I know we're not. So, but. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
Appreciate keeping us on the. Up front and not asking questions later, so.
Um, one thing I will mention, just because you guys are being targeted, um, as far as department heads or supervisors. This is something I learned in the conference is that they are ransomware attacks and now are looking at high-level employees or high-level individuals. And they're using friends and family to, to pressure them to pay. With the ransom, so just like, and target us in a way. Well, they'll, they'll either look you up, because you're a public official, okay? And then they'll, they'll try to, if they, if we've already been, you know, implemented or breached for whatever, a term, if you will. They'll come after state department heads and board of supervisors to, um. Pressure them into paying the ransom and they'll, they can potentially either start looking at your personal emails in that capacity, if you've got that out there. Or.
They try to blackmail you.
Yep, that's, that's, that's a tactic that's been, um. I've got the name, so it's kind of a generic name as far as the ransomware game.
Come after me, I like a good fight.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, they're just kind of giving you.
Just go back to mail.
Mail, mail.
Yeah. So, but just wanted to make sure, kind of keep you guys vigilant.
Are we doing the OCIO crowd strike implementation webinar tomorrow?
Um, I mean, we're actually like, so, okay, if we're gonna open that camera, I got five minutes yet, so. So OCIO actually is implementing crowd strike, okay? And it's going to eventually, not today, tomorrow, next week, next month, it's going to replace our antivirus, okay? Um, it's, that's why I excluded our antivirus from next year's budget. Um, we were actually the state thing you said we get for free, right? Yep, that's what I just, yeah, and that's why I'm mentioning here. Um, they started with all the auditors in the state, okay? Um, and they did phase one, um, which was just kind of a protect only function. And now they've graduated in, um, this month to phase two in district three, which is this district on northwest Iowa. Um, was actually the guinea pig or pilot for test or phase two. Okay, that was implement, that was started last week, okay? So that's, so that's all already in place and what phase two is, is it's, um, it's not a. Um, prevention mode, a full-on prevention mode, um, it's like a pseudo or partial.
Okay.
Okay, um, the meeting that you saw Jerry for next week is, um, oh, was that? It was tomorrow, okay, for tomorrow, excuse me, yeah, because tomorrow is the twentieth, because they've had it going.
That meeting.
Tomorrow's the nineteenth. Tomorrow, tomorrow nineteenth, one o'clock, I mean, I'm just.
Yep, that meeting is just to kind of rehash phase two. Is all it is, and keep in mind, this is strictly for the auditors only. It's not getting rolled out.
She only has to be there.
Well, I mean, you guys are welcome to attend if you want to.
I'm gonna watch it, just saying.
Yeah. It was, I mean, I think it was brought up to, it was sent to board of supervisors across the state, so I mean, there's nothing saying you can't attend, but. Um, basically, it's just a, I don't want to say hot wash, because that's not really the correct term, but a, a rehash of any incidents occurred, issues, things along those lines. Um, and then they're hoping to go live across the state by the end of the month.
Under this month?
Yes, for auditors only.
Okay, right, yes.
Okay, well, let's really get it done.
That's a bad idea. Election.
We go, I'll come two days after.
I, I, I think the Secretary of State was the one that was really kind of pushing us to. Roll this out rather quickly before the election. So I can't confirm or deny that one. I just know OCIO was really, really harping it. We want to get this out before the election, so. It got rolled out. We didn't really have much of a say in the process as far as counties were concerned. So, um, but, but yeah, so that's, that's what that's all about. Um, eventually, we're looking, uh, according to OCIO, it'll probably be beginning of next year, we'll, we'll start rolling out to. Um, the entire county or to all counties, so. But, um, I don't expect that to occur until twenty twenty-three, so. But, yep, so.
Since we have you in here, we have three minutes. How is the time clock system? Is anything going with that at all?
Um, I have to talk, you'd have to talk with Amy about that. I've, we've put some, I, I, I have put some. Dropped some hints about it in the past. Um, hey, what, 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 we're gonna, are we moving forward with it? I can't imagine right now, and I, I'm kind of speaking out of turn here, so just forgive me, Terry, okay? But I can't imagine we're gonna be doing anything right the second, because of elections.
I knew elections were.
So. But, I mean.
Still on a burner someplace.
Yep, I mean, it's still out there, so it hasn't. We haven't, it just hasn't made a lot of traction at this moment, but I mean, it's on my. Radar, so to speak, so, um, I'm just, I just need to, you just need to get Amy kind of moving on it, so, because she's the one that was gonna typically say.
All right.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I still made it before.
Excellent.
All right. Good job.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
Yep.
Citizens input.
I some of the adjournments.
Oh, I gotta ask the auditor.
I'm sorry. I probably should, but I don't.
Okay. Gosh, there's a motion and a second, I'm able to adjourn all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ready to go, huh?
Way to be prompt. Look at you all.
My golly.
Says what you are, sixteen sound and splatter.
The stars do a lie every once in a while. Although I tried my best this year so far. I am not, you don't know what you'll do the rest of your morning.
Eric, when is the next region twelve policy board meeting?
I'm gonna repeat. Oh, it's not till December.
Did he tell you about the voter registration drive up at the high school and stuff?
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. That'd be great.
What time is it?
Um, I think like around two fifteen. In the fine arts center. You got through all of it?
Yeah. Wow, usually like empty and we still got quite a bit of meat.
There's some here if you need to fill out.
You're good, yes?
Yeah.
Well, I think too much. She passed. Yeah, all right. See that.